Yeah.
July twenty one. Take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Mr. Trail would like to leave us in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local please.
Shane Davis.
Here.
Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Marissa Gag.
Here.
Chip F.
Here.
Approval of minutes for the June regular council meeting and approval of minutes for June twenty second. So I'll be. Motion on both. Let's start with the. June tenth, about two minutes and a half. Any questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve June tenth.
I'll second that. Yeah, I got a motion and a second. Roll call, real please.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Marissa Gag.
Hi.
Chip F.
Hi. Minutes for June tenth for approved. Same with the June twenty second meeting. You've got the minutes. Motion.
Say it.
We've got a motion and a second. Will.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Marissa Gag.
Hi.
Chip F.
Hi. Minutes for the June twenty second special meeting approved. Court treanture report.
Okay, mine's pretty short this month. When our meeting falls on the eighth day of the month, really cramps everybody to get everything into us to get the end of the month closed out. And when you throw a three day week in there, just, you know, that's my excuse. But anyway, that we have about eighty employees who do summer employment with the park and pool golf course. So but you also have a copy or the council panel voucher at the last stop. It's so if I. Those are welcome too.
That's all.
Actually, on this report, all we're doing is going to ask for a motion just to approve the claims that all of you. I think.
They sent out.
Yeah, it's sent out. That's that's just what we're approved is the claims that were already made. Any questions or comments? If not, I like a motion. So move.
Say it.
Roll call. Roll call please.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Marissa Gag.
Hi.
Chip F.
Hi. We'll move down to the department, of course. Chief Donai.
Good evening. Once again, another busy month for the fire department. From last year to this year, we're up twenty runs. For this month of June last year, for the month of June, we did fifty-three. This year, we're seventy-three runs. So we're. Record-setting pace once again for the fire department. We're also picking in the high gear. Our public safety day, which will be on August twenty ninth from one to four. So we're in the planning stages for that. So we'll be looking for some more information coming out on that. It'll be wonderful. One to four, be on broadband from the fire station. We're going to have the helicopter lands behind the fire stations like we have done in years past and stuff. So. Got some really cool educational things coming up. We're designing right now. So. We've had some fires and stuff over the past couple of months where we're going to, we're able to get some props from the homeowners as the worst to be able to show the citizens of why it's important to sleep with your doors closed. Just because of one side of the doors on black and the other side is not just from the area and stuff. With the smoke, so we're going to have that on display and stuff like that. So we're going to have. They reached out to the state police, Pendleton Police Department, Sheriff's Department, Health Department. All county agencies, parks, management and stuff to to be here with us for that day. Should be an exciting day. Hopefully, weather wobbles. Any questions?
The first question I'll get is a one.
Absolutely. 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 So they'll be there in rare form. Hopefully, they won't have to cook too many hamburgers like they did the June jamboree. So I'll see.
Twelve five. Twelve five.
Yeesh. I don't think we can get that. It's a lot.
Any questions or comments for chief? Good morning.
Thank you.
Chris, real quick, are we going to raise money for a bird camp?
Yes, we're still getting bird camps up here on station.
Good evening. Pendleton Police Department monthly report for June. One of the main things is Captain Sidwell has entered his letter of retirement. His final day will be tomorrow at four P M. I would have ordered him to be here at I, but he's been looking for a reason to get a thirty day paid suspension. So I think he would have, he would have balled to try to get suspended. With that said, if you have a chance tomorrow, come see him. He'll be his last shift. With him leaving, that opened a position for captain. I had four applicants within the department. And after third evaluation and and of course, knowing my men as well as I do, I've chosen Officer Lucas Trailer to be the new captain. And he came and joined us tonight. And we're excited to boost him up to captain. He was chosen two years running outstanding officer by the man of the department. So he's respected within and he's held two prior ranks when he was at Elwood before coming down. So he's been training with Randy the last two shifts now. Eight days, four days.
Roughly, yes.
And Randy's just been sharing with all kinds of knowledge. We have two reserves currently going through training. They just received a pepper spray the other day, which is always fun. And and then I believe they had Taser recently as well. But one is David Silva. You'll see him, he's not in uniform yet. His wife is a river here in town. And then Zach Woodford, Zach Woodford's Pendleton graduate. And we're excited to get him in. Something about Zach is he has no prior law enforcement. So he's kind of just a big ball of clay and he'll be fine. So they're both excited to become members. If people have heard about Elfie down on Magication Station, I got to meet him and his wife Latoya. We did a little safety talk the other day. Super nice people. Get a chance to go down there and meet them. He doesn't always talk as Elfie, so. Real good people. We had A E D training, C P R training, Linda Guston, always top notch. She's an asset to our service here in town through the ambulance. And we also had E V O C out at the school, which is emergency vehicle operation. So we did that in the east lot and everybody did well. You also notice an increase in some of the numbers, dispatch calls, one thousand four hundred and eighty-eight. What the night shifters are doing, now that I have Jerry Branson, it's something he brought with him. We do property checks throughout the shift. And normally, it's just driving through properties or whatever. Night shift's been now calling them in. So you'll see a jump in numbers and that's what that is. So this, this has been occurring all the time. Now we're just throwing it on dispatch to get the ticks to show that the guys are out. One conversation I had with Chet today, and I'd like to announce this or talk about it. Pendleton chatter was just thrashness the other day. I never see officers on this road. I never see him do this. I never see him do this. And the whole time chatter was blowing up about how bad we are. The officer, Jerry Branson, actually, was working the street that we were being complained about never working. And he didn't even do it because chatter. He did it because he knows it's a a street that needs activity check. So when people complain, say they never see us. If you live here. And you have a car coming this direction and we're here, you're not going to see us because our stop's going to be down here. And vice versa. So while you may not see us in front of your house, we're north, south, east, west of it. At any at a given time. So I just found that completely amusing because if you look at your ticket sheets, you'll see South Pendleton Avenue, South Pendleton Avenue. We were hammering it that time. And so I promise if there's areas, when I do see that stuff, I reach out to the man, hey, we'll get some complaints down here. Keep an eye on it. But if someone says they've never seen us, it's just because we're not parking and driving. We we are really working. The guys, my guys are top notch and I support them a hundred percent.
No, no, there wasn't a complaint of a. Note attention to me. I sent it to chief on pedestrian crossing out here. She wrote a real nice letter back to me and I passed that back to the resident. She was fine with it. I mean, she had lost suggestions, but other than making that a no turn on red and really making some drastic changes. We're, we're okay. And I think she was okay with it. But she appreciated the letter of response to come back as quickly as there. So I appreciate it.
Yeah. But just real quick, just to pick on the ground, the issue is the four way downtown. When you have the right to walk through the intersection, there's still cars that also have a legal right to make right hand turn. And what's happening is they're making a right hand turn, seeing someone in the crosswalk and stopping. Well, it's kind of unnerving when you're pedestrian to have a car. But then the driver also is kind of unnerving because of the amount of traffic. I'm sure their attention. So we've been super lucky and the only other way is a. No turn on red, when pedestrians are on the cross there or something real radical. But what we're going to do is the officers, I notify them all, keep tabs on the corner, no parking areas. That keeps it visible. And then, of course, if there is somebody that does move through the crosswalk when someone's a pedestrian, that's a violation. So guys, real aware. Thank you.
Any questions, comments from chief? Thanks, chief.
Awesome. Thank you.
Judge.
Maybe. Just to say to bring, bring the light. In the fact that right now, the program we've been using in Long Beach, using the probable cause at David program is being phased out by another program that's going to be run by prosecutors office in Madison County I T group. The effect on us, there'll still be a system out there for it. But over the past eleven years or thereabouts, that's been our baby. And the fact that we've been able to use that for some funding with the court attacks. So that's going to be changed. The other thing, okay, it costs money. Not really too much yet because we haven't gone through it yet. Scott and I put through a extensive survey with Sheriff Joe Dowd. Dowd from the State Supreme Court Sheriff's Office. And what his job is, again, his extensive career in law enforcement. His dad was also, he's also been working with the Supreme Court for a period of years, is to go in and assess, I want to call it threats, potentials, concerns that we as a town court have the potential to request that they come and say, okay. What, what do you propose? They drew, he's got a guess, about thirty-five page report that we've gone through yet, but to show us some different things that he said, you know, he looked at this. Understand, this is not a have to situation. He addressed that multiple times. But he said, you know, there's some things here, things have changed. Come into. Town hall, Pendleton Town Court, come into town council meeting. And for you to even say it's never even happened here. So my mind is the fact you get to see some more information, Scott, I can look at this and bring more of a surprise when we find out what's going on. Give it back to you and see. Think about this. Questions?
Thanks, Judge. Eric.
Good evening. Just a couple of things for my report that I wanted to draw your attention to. Mike Cannon has retired from the park after thirty-four years. So if you see Mike around town, tell him thanks for everything he's done for the park and other organizations throughout the community. And then we had some complaints about the bridges that lead to the trails, the decades start to rot away on some of them. So over this next month, we're going to be closing some of those bridges. To make the needed repairs to a, we may even end up replacing a bridge completely. We won't know that until we get into it. But just for people to be mindful that if the bridges are roped off, blocked off, closed, do not enter signs. They're there for a reason. We don't want any of that to happen. Okay, I'm just going to move on. So. That's all I have. Questions for me?
Thank you. Hello.
For the month of June, we saw another great month of the construction, also remodel permits being pulled. The number of available lots are starting to trickle. So that's the reason you're seeing a slow in the number of new homes constructed this month compared to the last two. But that's expected, given the phase we're in with a few of the different subdivisions that are under construction. As far as other planning department news, Unified Development Ordnance Update, U D O, and the Thoroughfare Plan are still working in conjunction to be completed by the end of August. It might require a special meeting over the course of August at some point, but at this point, you don't know that for sure. The public drafts for both documents have been released. Hopefully, the Thoroughfare Plan is going to be talked about more here underneath business. But the Unified Development Ordnance Draft will be made available on our town website as well as social media. Of course, if anybody needs a hard copy, they're welcome to come into town hall. I'm working on creating a little bullet point sheet hopefully before our public open house on July twenty ninth, which will be in this room. Between six and eight o'clock. That's about it.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you.
Um. So first, I want to just spin off from what Kayla was talking about. So the Thoroughfare Plan, the road impact fee, access control ordinance, and U D O, any one of those alone. Be a heavy burden to get that through for a planning department as small as we are. They should do all that. So. Wonderful job. Only thing I have, I'll kick a short reel out on the agenda. Water Street is going well now that they're out of the, out of the rock. They've got the pipe in. They're starting on the sidewalks and the curb. I saw it. Curved yesterday. So it should feel like it's going fast now. And the pre-construction meeting for the Franklin Street project will be tomorrow at ten. So anybody that wants to attend that, the department head will be there. The big issue discussion will be the traffic control while they're. State Street. The other big thing that's, that's happening is there's a swift grant, which is a stormwater infrastructure grant. It's a hundred million for the state. You can get up to five million. We're going to put in for roughly three and a half. And we're going to do it in a way that we can cut things out if we need to. But basically, that's going to be to finish up the depot parking lot, improve the drainage on Broadway, right there by the depot parking lot. We're going to use, it's not experimental, but it'll probably be the, it's would be the first time in town. We're going to use a permanent brick to gather the stormwater. And what we'll do is we'll break the alley between here on State Street or Compton Avenue all the way over to Broadway. That'll connect to the depot parking lot, which will be a pleasant, pretty for a parking lot. And then that will draw the pedestrian traffic. We'll also reconstruct the line runs from Elm to Madison between Maine and Compton Avenue, which has been the major source of the flex. You think south of State Street. And we're going to also look at breaking that Elm Street. That's got to be all reconstructed, that little short stretch of Elm Street. So we're going to look to use a permanent brick to do that too. So we'll be doing two for one. Improve the looks, start to improve the looks of the downtown. And handle our stormwater situation. But of course, if we don't get the grant, then all those projects will be little pieces spread out over the years.
In on that. State grant that you were talking about, one of the advantages, correct me if I'm wrong, is that because we have projects on paper talking about, you, you get a better chance of.
Right.
You move up to top of the list on these grants and.
Right.
Scott and planning, a lot of people were part of that. So the projects are already in the making, even if it's on paper. That's what the state wants. So that's, that's a plus for you to get the grant.
Yeah, you had extra points if you. Have projects underway. And by the way, we can retroactively go back and we will gather stormwater money contribution by the town for Water Street and Franklin Street. So we get bonus points for that. And then we get bonus points because it's actually two jurisdictions. The depot parking lot is a parking lot for the park also. So we get bonus points for that because it's not just a standalone jurisdiction. The other thing we've been working on is going to use the next mini crossings grant to pave. And Rick and I have been working on that. And we're going to have Manny Engineer help us finish up that plan and get it submitted. The Swift Grant, by the way, is due in a week. We're scrambling to put that together. And then the next slide, good job. And I want to, special thanks to Tracy. I think we had some unexpected absences by her staff. And she, for two days straight, she handled the whole office all by herself. Of course, we backed her up and she needed to go the rest of her, her lunch. But she did a wonderful job. And. Our street department has really, they were phenomenal. They were really, they're going to the next level. Their quality, their quantity and their capabilities are constantly increasing. I think the last two people we hired have really been what Ricky needed. So you know, electric department, very quickly, there were some comments at the farmer's market that they needed more outlets along that strip between the curb and the park and museum. They added three more, there's three more poles there. And they added outlets to each one of those. And then they helped the parks department with that. When they had to replace the pool. And then water department, they came through. We had to relocate a line during the Water Street project. And through Justin's persistence and the help of his two teammates, they did a lot of work and they were able to save thirty thousand. Initial quotes were really high and they did a lot of work themselves. And in the end, we were able to, we needed a contractor, but the work that was reduced down to was just ten thousand dollars. So phenomenal on there. That's all I have.
Questions or comments? Thanks, Scott. Moving to new business, I'm, I'm going to move the. Get into here a little bit, go down to the bottom on new business for Tyler Trust. Go ahead and solve, but then we'll sit here and listen to us talk about all that other stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me here.
If you will, state your name.
It's Mark Johnson. I'm the CEO at Tyler Trust. So coming before you today to request some tax abatement assistance with this as we're looking for a new, new building. Looking to add on for us. So first, a little bit about Tyler Trust. We've been based out Pendleton since two thousand and six. We've been based out of Billington since two thousand and six and in our current location since two thousand and sixteen. For those who don't know, we specialize in building a little trust, the live events industry. And we are recognized as one of the world's leaders in our services. We have our customer base extends not only in the United States, but all over the world. And our products appear at some of the best well-known venues that you all might have heard of before. And we're from Disney to Broadway, the Dallas Cowboys Stadium. And our products are used by several top artists, artists using, from Garth Brooks to Elton John to AC/DC. So our trust, what we build, basically, they're using it up above head, and our lights, speakers are all hanging from those, that's what we're building. So we not only do concerts, we also do Broadway shows. We also do a lot of these conventions where they set up larger conventions, so that's what we do. So we are looking to, the next page there, we're looking to purchase the former capital machinery building, its current home capital machinery, they're on Angle Road, right across from the high school softball field. It's twenty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-eight square feet. We're looking to purchase that and add on for us to be able to expand our business. And the last page there kind of talks about, a little about what we're looking to do. And we're looking for a capital investment of roughly three and a half billion dollars that we're going to be putting in. It's going to increase our capacities, allow us to double our sales from a record year of two thousand and nineteen. Obviously, last year, our sales were completely decimated because live events wasn't happening, but we're looking to make a lot of improvements, a bounce back. Projections for next year will exceed, will exceed two thousand and nineteen. They're already on pace right now as businesses start to return the last couple of months. If we can continue that, we'll continue to exceed that. Our investment will allow us to add thirty-three more employees, with the majority of the workforce being skilled trades, being certified welders that we're looking to bring in, along with adding additional management staff. This will increase our annual wages, additional one point eight million dollars on an annual basis. It also allows us to diversify our sales, go into additional markets outside of just the live events. As we saw last year, we have to be, have a diversification so we don't suffer like we did last year. So we've already looked at several markets, we've already started diversifying those markets and capitalizing on some of those. And we have to be able to ramp up to be able, we found out there's lots of untapped potential out there in marine markets. So we've been, a lot of people have been reaching out to us, we've been building a lot of different products for the marine industry. So it's kind of a quick overview of what I'm looking for. Questions?
You're saying you're here. When you get there, thirty-three more employees, what's your current employees?
Our current, our current employees were right at the thirty employees mark. A free COVID, though, we were at seventy-five employees. And that basically, that thirty-three will be on top of, once we get back, we bring it back up to that seventy, so we'll be over a hundred employees as well. It will be, okay. We are aggressively searching and hiring right now for our existing business. We had to lay off several employees, obviously, during last year, and we're struggling to fill those positions back right now.
President, because this was added to the agenda, I know very little about it, so.
So, so I was going to suggest a town attorney to talk about what is going to happen, what needs to happen for. Sure. Tax payments are available for real estate and for personal property. If you still have a personal property tax, it may find a guy like Ken pretty hard. I don't know if you have a personal property tax return, if it's spent or not, or if you're in the.
I don't.
Okay.
The owner of our business says.
Okay, the business is why. Yes, yes. Yeah, so there are abatements available for that. Traditionally, there's a ten-year abatement, which a hundred percent of the tax would be abated in year one, and ninety percent year two, and it rolls off all by the, by the end. That requires an ordinance by the town council, requires a public hearing, notice, things of that nature. So we conceivably done as early as the office paid. And for a public hearing, we might have to drag someone from the company back to talk, I don't like what you just did, do it again. But there's also a, the state has certain categories in an attempt to rejuvenate buildings that are currently out of use. There's a special kind of tax abatement that I'm going to learn more about before, and I'll send it to these guys, too, to look at. And that, a little less on administrative costs that they may be eligible for, I'm going to review the requirements. But it's better for the town and better for you if you fit. So I'll send that to you guys. But ultimately, it's petition filed for abatement by the company. Gets put in the form of a state form, which is an ordinance. And the town council can either grant the abatements or deny them. And I say abatements because generally, a company like this, you have a real estate abatement and a personal property abatement, they're two different ordinances. And then if we go the traditional route, once a year, there's a compliance hearing in which we invite them to come back and show that, because they're going to make certain promises. If we're going to have real estate, we're going to buy real estate this amount, we're going to have this many employees, so this and that. And you'll just confirm and talk to them, make sure that they're doing what they said. You don't want to give them an abatement. If you could pull the abatement back if they cut down one employee or something to that nature. We hope that doesn't happen. But the state statute requires that these abatements be reviewed once a year by the council. Usually, it's just a check the box, yeah, good job, keep going.
Does there, thank you, Mr. Over the number of, yeah, of ten years, does it have to be for ten years?
No. Okay. You have a lot of root of play, and we'll talk about that.
Okay, okay. A lot, a lot of times, people will, will talk to themselves about abatements. I used to be dead at ease when I was trying to bring some business out here to the business part a few years back. And I learned a good lesson about it from a very successful business guy, Andy Anderson. And basically, what he's telling me, told me is, just like Tyler Trust here, you bring a hundred employees back eventually in here, they're going to eat at Hardee's, they're going to eat at the bank. They're going to buy gas in town, and they're going to be in town. So to me, that's a plus, and that's the reason why I asked a question about, does it have to be for ten years? We'll go through all that on the application, but I think it's a plus we're talking upfront instead of what has been done in the past, I'll put it that way. And that way, everybody's upfront about this. So. Any questions or comments from the council?
From May to the fourth, I've toured their plan, I've dealt with these people, and they've been really, really helpful with the project I had at the golf course, building a handicap ramp. They built the handrail and everything, installed it, and did a great job at considering price, very, very reasonable. So they're, they're a good neighbor, and I think we need to try to help them all again. We appreciate that. And I invited by tourist plan, I was really impressed.
So just so you know, they have applied for the industrial recovery tax credit that was submitted to me, so.
Thank you.
Hey. New business. For, for plan discussion.
So tonight, we'll be introducing the Thoroughfare Plan Draft and Brandon Kander of Madison County Council of Governments. It's a big one to lead us through this section of new business, so I'll let him take it from here.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I'm Brandon Kander from the Madison County Council of Governments, and I'm the project manager for the Pelton Thoroughfare Plan. The final draft document of the Thoroughfare Plan should be located in your Google Drive folder. I also want to point out an email I sent you all yesterday. This email provides another link to access the final draft document, but more importantly, contains a survey for the prioritization of action items within the Thoroughfare Plan. If you all could take the time to rank the action items within the four timeframes before the end of the, before the end of July, that would be a huge help. I want to point out three items about the Thoroughfare Plan draft document. First, you'll notice an update to most of the images and maps. We have added all the outstanding graphics needed for the analysis portion of the document. If the images or maps appear unclear or fuzzy, it is because of the, the size of the document, but we will get that fixed for the final Thoroughfare Plan adoption. Second, after the recommendations from Plan Commission members and town staff, we have moved establishing a thoroughfare fund and the collector's system planning program to the immediate timeframe, which is ongoing to a year. And the North Heritage Way Extension Project has been moved to the medium timeframe, which is approximately four to six years. We will continue to work with town staff to establish the Thoroughfare Fund immediately after the adoption of the Thoroughfare Plan in August. And then my third and final point is that the document will not be in its final form until the August fourth Plan Commission meeting because of the in-person public workshop that is to take place at the end of the July. The joint Thoroughfare Plan and UDO public workshop will take place on Thursday, July twenty-ninth from four to, from, I'm sorry, from six to eight P M. at Town Hall. The main goal of the public workshop is to allow the public to view both documents and receive feedback on the prioritization of action items for the Thoroughfare Plan. The meeting will be set up as a gallery-style open house where the public can visit different poster boards that explain different aspects of the Unified Development Ordinance and the Thoroughfare Plans. Getting the word out and your attendance at the public workshop would be a huge help to our success. We are excited to showcase both documents to the public, and we will continue to advertise the public workshop throughout the month of July. And you'll be receiving emails from myself close to the public workshop meeting date, just as a reminder. So are there any questions about the Thoroughfare Plan, final draft document, or public workshop at this time?
I don't think so, Brandon. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Brandon's done a great job for us. He's really, it's a heck of a guy. Thank you.
Any questions for Kayla or Brandon?
I think it's a good step forward. It's something we need to get done, just long range, and we need to prepare for that. So yeah, I think a lot of good work's been done.
They all work.
Hopefully, we'll get some public input from this, and they carry it up, and the public will participate and throw the two separate.
So one of the things that we've done, I think that's a step above, which is with help of Brandon and Kayla and some of the other consultants, is that the Thoroughfare Plan, UDO, and the impact study that we were going to talk about here are all integrated, so they weren't done in silos. Lots of yous don't do this now, let alone integrate different plans. In conjunction with each other, so.
Plus.
Plus.
Big plus, yeah. Okay. No other discussion on the Thoroughfare Plan. Let's go to ordinance twenty-one by fifteen, road impact fee ordinance. Scott?
Okay. Yesterday, when we were at the planning mission, we had to bring this word to them, I went over to support. But we've got a lot going on tonight, and so I'll open it up to any question, or if you want me to do a brief presentation, I could do that, but that's, that's up to you.
Comments?
After that, we'll jump right into the ordinance and Jeff can explain it.
I think most of the questions from last night, anyway, you know, when we start talking about the ordinance, we go over the ordinance right up. If not, I'm going to go over here and yell with. Okay. If that's all right. There's a lot there, but what Jeff's getting right off the, the meat and all of this.
Last night, the Plan Commission held required a public hearing on impact fee ordinance you have in front of you today for final consideration. As, as you know, that any planning document must first go through the Plan Commission. That's considered the first reading, and then you guys read second reading. So only one reading is required out of this particular the council tonight. You're allowed to table it, you're allowed to pass it, you're allowed to disapprove it, go to coach, whatever you'd like to do. You do have in your, in your packet a favorable recommendation last night, there were six members in the Plan Commission present. It was a six oh voted favor, or a favorable recommendation to pass the, get back the ordinance and go councilman Jones at that. Were present, Mr. Bowles was also present. But what this does, this allows for new development, only new development or other, or such development that requires the issuance of a permit, the approval location permit. It allows the town to recoup the estimated costs that impact, the impact on the, on roads. And the state law for, for this kind of thing doesn't allow a municipality to simply say, well, we think that's going to be about, so for a house, it's going to be about two thousand dollars, or ten thousand, or twenty thousand. What state law says you have to have a, something to, you know, hang your hat on. What, how did you base that number? And what you guys did last year is you hired banning engineering to perform that analysis. It's a lengthy analysis, expensive analysis. But excellent, that, that is the guts of the whole thing. If, when you, when you see several times in this ordinance, you reference the banning report or the zone improvement plan. That's because this is, this is the substance of it. The, the ordinance itself, when I grew up, just keep referencing that over and over and over. We're adopting this, we're adopting the law. The state law that allows it. I'll just kind of do what I did last night. I know it might be a little bit boring for you guys who were here last night, but I'll just kind of go page by page through this, starting at the on the second page, where it starts now, therefore, we have ordained. One thing to keep in mind, by state law, these type of ordinances automatically repeal or must repeal within five years after they are adopted. And so it would be best practice in about three and a half, four years from now to hire another study. The reason for that's pretty clear. The state doesn't want a town to base its rates on old data. If new data, pass the ordinance again. The, the other municipalities I've looked at, they, every five years. I've never, I haven't seen anybody put an impact be in place, and then later decide, well, we really don't need that money. We'll just, we'll just forget about it. Everybody is growing, everybody intends to continue to grow, and so these are. The state law also requires section two, you must establish impact zones, which, where will this impact fee apply? Like most places, our engineer banning has, has suggested that the entire town be impacted. So anywhere in town, there's, there's, there would be this type of development. You must pay the impact fee that laid out in this ordinance. Section three is, how much is the impact fee? Oh, it's right there. It's based on the, the cost per twenty-four hour trip within the impact zone. And that was based, and Scott knows a little bit about this, I don't, the amount that it came up with is nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-five cents for twenty-four hour trip. That is loosely based on the anticipated cost to do everything. You can read the plan. There's a twenty million dollar number in there. That's the estimated cost over the next five years. Yes, it's part of an estimate, but it, it's a guess, but it's a very educated guess based on projections of growth, which is going to be extremely high according to the engineer. And Scott commented last night that he thinks that the engineer was even a little conservative on that, but white hot growth is the projection to the town. So that number is fairly high, higher than some of the other ones you'll, you'll see around. And then for, that equates to about eight thousand eight hundred dollars, eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-one cents for single family. And for multi-family residential units, it's a little under seven thousand, it's six thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. And then for all other types of development, it's based on the how many twenty-four hour trips are, will stem from that building. And how's that done? Well, it's that, that last sentence there. Well, it's that that last sentence there, subparagraph A, it's based on calculations, it's taken from the latest version of the I T Trip Generation Manual, a study published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Can you read it?
I do, I read it every day. So excited, just for the art. So basically, if a large industry comes in or a large business or commercial entity will go to an engineer for almost like the right town. You rerun the traffic modeling to see how much extra traffic that would bring. How many more extra cars would that bring into the town on an average day? It would be times that $900. Example, yesterday was an entity that was basically generated twice as much as what a home would generate. Smaller, smaller business, where their impact would be twice, roughly twice. But that's for a new business, not replacing one that's existing or moving into another country. One of the things that the town council, or not the town council, the plant commission was particularly interested in is well, what happens for existing buildings that change the type of business? Or what happens when a business grows? Well, unless there's an improvement, location permit issue, no impact.
And that's key to this whole thing is the issue of the permit.
The idea is the impact to the roads is caused by growth. So who should pay for that impact growth? The people that are coming in that causing the impact. Thank goodness they're coming. I mean, it's it's not meant to be a penalty, it can't be a penalty. It's just to reimburse the talent. And Scott made a good point last night on a common misconception. You guys know this, Willie certainly knows it. But when people move into town, there's a perception that, oh, my God, penalty, you're having all this growth, you're going to get so many more tax dollars. Look at it anymore. It might lower your tax burden, you don't get another cent. So this is, this is a way to, in the meantime, those the the new population is putting strains on all kinds of areas within the town. Subparagraph C there in section three talks about that. Only an improvement location permit that creates the need for new infrastructure will trigger the impact fee. Here's kind of a nifty way, though, for particularly big developers to get around, not get around, not have to write a big check. They can perform the work themselves, and it's credit loop payments. And what they can do is, and this has to be an agreement between the town and the developer, both on the type of work and the value of the work. But let's use an example, let's say the impact fee is a quarter million dollars. If our planning department, town manager and developer agree that if they do certain pavings, certain road projects, that that can knock off $100,000 at that price, because we won't have to do it. So those are the kind of things that section four talks about how that how that happens. So if I could. So if we have a subdivision that goes into development and we think that they need to improve the roads along that development, that would not, that would not be an exact example. We would ask that they do that or probably would improve their development. What they have to do is work on those projects listed that improve the capacity of the town to handle the extra traffic. Example, if one of the projects listed is around about, could be, doesn't have to necessarily be around about, that's your penalty point. Well, at some point, let's say, penalty point, it never happened, but now they they come to us and they say, you'd like to do this development. If they helped with construction of that roundabout at 67 in North Penn, that that would count as a credit. But if we said they had to approve, what's the road right next to it? South or just just.
Marcy.
On Marcy, you'll say that they, we said, you're going to have more traffic on Marcy because particularly of your development. That would count for the construction on the roundabout, which is. Section five talks about, well, what does this impact fee do? It's due at the issue, it's at the structural. It's not due necessarily, although we'll talk about that in just a second. Not doing the time the plan is submitted or anything like that, when when you pull the permit. If it's over $5,000, however, you can see in there that the state law requires that we offer an installment plan. And the installment plan, Scott and Kayla and I kind of put our heads together, and I listened to them, and we came up with this. First off, when I'm talking about the installment plan there from page four to page five, paragraph one and paragraph, or pretty much all of it is derived from state statute. The maximum you can request upfront is either $5,000 or 5% of the total fee, whichever one's higher. You get that right up front. Then your second one, you can't request anything more for a year. So our idea, their idea, I just listened, was to do one-third, 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 one-third after a year, one-third after 18 months. And what did the final payment do in two years? Two years is as far out as these things can go. The balance, though, we, this may not be used much because the balance that's owed has interest at the eight percent, which is the Indiana code, so.
Question right there, we talked about that last night. But Jeff's talked about it, eight percent for the ordinance outside of state, the state statute. More likely, a developer would do that. If they go out and it says, well, you refinance it, who finances it?
Bank or some financials.
I mean, it doesn't throw it back up the court track.
Okay. Well, the clerk treasurers, let me back up, let me make sure I didn't just speak. The clerk treasurer's office will have the the paper which shows what's up. But it'll take the checks. That's that's the extent.
Okay. Take a third, third, third.
Plus eight percent.
Plus eight percent.
Does that give us a lien against that property?
Yes, yes, yep, it sure does. And that's section six, lien rights. The instance that the impact fee is calculated, there's a lien on property, what the building permit is issued, the full amount right there. And that's, a lot of this is to protect development and encourage development, but this is a, this is a way to protect the town. And so, you know, if something goes bad on the development, there is a lien that the town theoretically could foreclose on if things got nasty enough. Hope that wouldn't happen, but it is a, it is a way for security for the town. The town becomes a a pretty high priority lien over. Set section seven is the form of the receipt. Okay, section eight is a is a good because, okay, well, maybe Kayla and Scott don't like somebody when they come in and try to assess them for a impact fee on building that one room only. Yeah. Much better than section. Any person that's agreed by a factual assumption or the amount of the impact fee can appeal to this review board, which will be created prior to this ordinance becoming effective. A review board is made up of three people, an accountant, a realtor, and an engineer. They serve terms, they can only be removed for calls. You guys, next month, I anticipate will be asked to create this review board. In fact, you have to before January. But create this review board to to sit. And anybody who wants to complain about something about impact fees can go to this board. They don't have to be residents of the town, although they can be. And they're, they, the intention is for them to be an independent board that if we make a mathematical mistake or we think there's an infrastructure problem, there's not, this appeals board can sit astray. Any person that's assessed a fee can go to them. There's a hundred dollar fee for going to the board. That is not to discourage that, but it is to cut down hopefully on frivolous appeals. And if a person doesn't get successful even by a dollar, if we we assess $250,000, the appeals board knocks it down a hundred bucks, they get their hundred dollar application. So we certainly would encourage people to use the appeal process if they think that there was a mistake made at the town. And section, subsection C on section eight talks about if a person asks for the permit and they think there's a mistake in this in the calculations that we made, we can't just hold the permit until they pay it. They get it, and then they have 30 days to complain to the board or pay it. They get a little bit of a flow there, but lien attaches immediately. So there's that, unless it's a thousand dollars or less, which we can require it. Or they can immediately initiate the appeal with the with the appeal board. Scott just mentioned that these things you're seeing tonight were not done in silos. They certainly weren't the coordination that goes on between those two. And previously Rachel and the rest of the town officials is unique to anything I've ever seen. Section nine talks about the Road and Street Thoroughfare Fund. This is a fund that gets created, and the money that comes out of that fund will be used to pay for roads that are in compliance with our thoroughfare plan, which you will adopt as well. So the money that you're going to get out of this impact fee can be used only in the ways you described. So you're, you're the puppet masters up here when you're doing the creating the ordinance. Congratulations there in subsection B to the clerk treasurer, who is designated as the town official responsible for acting upon refund requests. The section, section 10 talks about, it just pretty much makes sure that we only spend the money on projects contemplated by Indiana law. Another thing is that the money must be spent within there must be progress toward the project within two years. Does it have to be complete? No. And if, or does this town knows it, that if there's a natural disaster that would slow down the process, you get extra time. What you can't do is sit there and twiddle your thumbs and gain interest on it.
And can I just expand on that? So it's, it's, you have to spend it on the projects that are listed in the study. However, if you come up with a better solution to relieve the traffic, as long as, on that project, as long as it gives the same results as as what the study, the project, the study and let's go back to the one example. For example, he picked a roundabout to solve the problem at North Penn at 67. Well, it could be that we decided to just put a light up there. For an easy example, I'm pushing them or anything like that. But but so let's say that's half the cost of the roundabout. So we, so we put in the stoplight, that would check the block. Okay, they completed that project. As long as it meets the intent of the original project, you can switch, change your project.
Goes back to why this study, the banning done, well, as Jeff was talking about, very expensive. It's very regimental, what we could do and can't do. And it always goes back to the study and the project.
The costs were minimum of four, there was more, but there was a possibility of minimum of four traffic models for the whole town. Enter each intersection. The traffic counts, all sorts of things.
The section 12 just talks about that we are adopting the Indiana code for impact fees and that if there's any requirements that, procedure requirements that are absent or ordinance for whatever reason, the state law would break any ties, the state law reflects with the, with this ordinance, we're adopting the state law. Section 13 is something you should be aware of, that this ordinance can only take effect for six months at passage. I've taken the liberty of putting six months, they, we pass it, it would be January 8. This ordinance is recorded. This ordinance will, when it comes recorded, it's considered to be prima facie evidence that everyone is on notice. It comes to the town of Penn to that they're actively speaking. They can't, well, I didn't know. It is recorded and people are going to know anyway. I think that's developers, these are not new animals. These are developers are aware of these things. I don't think, I think the only surprise would be that there's not one of them. I understand the town will talk about it for a while. Sections 14 and 15 are lawyer garbage. But that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Yeah.
Talk a little bit about this, the money has to be used in two years, you said last night.
Yes, you have to show progress toward the allowed use of the money. So doesn't have to all be gone, but what what a developer can't say truthfully, this would get us in trouble. Well, I paid you this hundred thousand dollars at 2019, here we are in 2021, you have to bank. No, we've done this, this is that. As long as we've done this, this and that, even if there's still some money available, we're okay. It's not a super strict thing, but it's just prohibiting a town from, or the city from just sitting on their table. Yeah, yeah, just waiting for a really big project. The point is, if they're paying a development fee or an impact fee, use it to help alleviate the impact.
So the beauty of this is, as you know, Indax expanding 67, adding an extra travel lane as it comes through town out there. Thirty-six. So the wisdom of banning, this was their idea, we can grant it, is that they listed the town's contribution on that project that would increase, improve the traffic flow. So that's going to happen in construction this 2023. And so that's probably the first place we'll put to use some of this money is to contribute to that. We're worried about finding the contributor, but now this impact fee will solve that. So so that'll be basically putting up some medias in certain places. Increase the traffic flow. It's the second highest traffic count. So and that is, when they did the traffic modeling, everything is dependent on how the traffic goes through 67. And through space, those two things.
The work will, will be. One thing, Jeff made a comment, I think Scott did too, about how long we've talked about this. And it's not only the hard work that a lot of people put in on this, how everything, you know, everything has to coordinate together to get to the point where we're at tonight. This impact fee is very important for the future of the town. And as Jeff just said, developers are going to be aware, are aware what we're doing. And it's not going to be, it's not going to run anybody out of town like kind of don't build houses. Okay, yeah, it's a lot of money. But they understand, and the study backs it up, that if we don't do this, you won't get people in town. That's, that's what it boils down to. I think Scott last night said, when we were talking about the dollars, the impact dollars have to make an impact on the developers. And there's clauses in this where the staff can negotiate different things, like Jeff talked about. It's $250,000 impact fee. Well, you do $100,000 worth of road improvement or whatever. That's, that's to get them in here and it helps the town, helps the developer, and we'll keep growing that steady, controlled, I call it growth, and it will come a long way.
Any other comments or questions?
Really, the the question came up last night, which, the question that Carol brought up, very, 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 small business that certainly want to build something out towards the interstate to do that. Small town, we want to encourage technology development, business growth, they've got issues. Question involved around as far as the the bees or maybe the pasture perhaps. Say you're, you're talking about, this is a restaurant, for example, what kind of traffic flow they would anticipate with that? Can these fees, what, what kind of impact, what like the words, that have on the decision of that business built? It can be potentially cost prohibitive for the build that, or maybe a teen operation. Position cost prohibitive for the old that or maybe a teen operation that could absorb that cost. Where. They have the challenge for that and they walk away from this project because of the cost for the anticipated traffic for that particular business, whatever they be. The question. Now, the turn that. Though the restaurant person, they carry a lot of information. Lawyer's office, that's the traffic flow. And then you build that lawyer's office and they go pay a fee of what it is. Three years later, they sell that to some other kind of business that has a full-on traffic flow to add on to it. It's changes or build a bin. How does that play out in the fairness to that?
So.
That's a top.
Yeah, so. The first thing you'll do is ask the question, will this have an impact on the traffic? Is it gonna generate more cars? So let's say somebody has a business downtown here, they're renting, they decide to want to build their building. Business. Building. You could, if you felt like, okay, that's just a business relocating, they're not gonna generate any more customers. They've been business for twenty years. Is that really an impact? Did they are they generating more average trips? Well, the answer actually is no. So we would go through that analysis. Now, if it's a business that's gonna triple its size. Three stylus, they're gonna go to twelve. Now, oh, well, maybe there is gonna be an increase.
They interrupt, you just throw up the point there. Three stylus to twelve. If.
And they're building a new building.
And they're building a new building. That's what I was trying to get at. That's gonna be saying that's a statement that they're building a new building. Not just moving from one building to another. Go back to what Jeff said in our ordinance. It's when you issue that building improvement, that that kicks.
So you have a lot that had a house on it four years ago that went down.
Okay, Scott, the veterinary clinic south of town. That just created a parking lot and everything. Really, it wouldn't be new business. It just could be.
Right, they.
So not being affected by that.
There I think there's three vets that work out there. It's still gonna be three vets. All they need is now those space. So that's not generating traffic. It would generally be the same number.
Yeah, it's really helped. They don't park up the street.
How about? Where they do this that. Will that change?
No, of course you're not.
Yeah, if they build a this is a building, a new building, build. So let's let's say, let's say the restaurant here goes out there. Jellies are square footage size. They're gonna pay the impact fee because it made their square footage bigger?
No, only if we think it's gonna impact, increase traffic.
Why will you you guys have that? You guys would have that in the planning and you guys would have that. To discuss that. Yeah.
Yeah, they have a they. There has to be a finding by our staff that will affect it that.
That effectively impacted more traffic. Okay.
But why if you were a business person, I'm gonna say this. Why would you build a new building if you didn't think it's gonna increase your business?
Well, but that just.
Well, that's true.
But if you want to comment about, go ahead.
Well, we do have to consider remodel permits as well as additions to existing buildings. If it's determined that those are connected to a use that is gonna cause more traffic. That would result in potentially a partial impact fee.
Right, if his law office changed from being a law office to a venue to a law contract.
Jeff, we were talking about why you build, get example McDonald's. I mean, once in a while they'll tear one down, build a new structure. General Motors does it all the time. They'll take a dealership and make you build what you build. You know, if there's gonna be a deal to increase your business. So something like that would be.
So so the concept is, you know, it's there's no. Dominous impact and then a house goes up. But when there's, if it's one out of a thousand homes going up in that one development, if you think about it, it's really the development that is causing the impact. But we do incrementally. Having the impact fee paid to the town as they build a home. So de minimis situations, believe me, it's gonna be expensive. It's gonna suck up staff time. If every little thing you're trying to attract new traffic while on, you're not gonna do that as staff. For us to decide side with that.
Kind of the impact fee of doing. Increase or moderate water fees for that to be a option. Are there any other impact fee areas beyond? Those.
You can do an impact for. Park, park. Sanitary. It's either water or stormwater. You do a system impact fee for a water.
Waste of your.
One other thing too that I didn't mention that I should have is that the banning suggests there'd be a five percent for your inflation adjustment. If your exhibit events, those numbers are just up five percentage here. People like the ordinance through January.
Can you look at that five percent? In what standpoint it's inflation. They're starting to take this equation at the end of this year or that. Provide, say five percent or two percent. Eighty percent.
We can we could tie it to an index. If we if we did, if we tied it to an index, it would have to go back to finance. That means same period, this is. This was the yeah, the. This came from the internet. We'll get it if it's in five years, we'll get certainly change. Or we could, you know. Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments? If you're taking public comment, I've got a comment. Sure, come on.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name's Edward Palenti. I'm from Decker Lawyer Manor. I represent several landowners of Pendleton Development and Ag Enterprises. Warren Nancy Hunsinger Trust out east of sixty, west of sixty nine directions. And we were here last night as well, and we are concerned about the procedures following the passage of this particular ordinance. As Jeff noted earlier, there has to be a plan commission reading and approval before this ordinance can be passed. And the facts on the ground show that the plan commission is not in compliance with state statute regarding its membership composition. Which means it is not fit to render a recommendation, yea or nay, on this particular item. So we would ask that this ordinance be tabled until such time as a properly impacted plan commission could come. And hear this issue and bring it back before you as there's not actually a statute or you go forward passing this if you don't have a properly panel. Plan commission. And that's the objection that we raised tonight, wanted to have on our record of the minutes that we're going to see. Thank you.
We have a question or comment from the public. I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty one by fifteen, the road impact fees.
I'll second that.
Will.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Denny. Marissa Gage.
Hi.
Bob Jones.
Hi.
Jeff Baer.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty one by fifteen is approved. Okay, next one is ordinance twenty one by sixteen, access.
All right, this was another example of our UDO team, our thoroughfare plant team working together. And the only change you'll notice is that figure one, just an illustration showing the site clearance distance at a corner. How we measure that is changing just a little bit. So figure one got changed out. So the value of X. Basically, it's nice back to video and it's just looking a little different. We just very much a technical deal, so we don't have to come back and do this after we did. That's it.
This is from the March eleventh.
Yes.
Any questions about this for Taylor? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Will.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Marissa Gage.
Hi.
Jeff Baer.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty one by sixteen is approved.
The plan commission gave a favorable recommendation on that.
Okay.
Last night, it serves as your first read.
Okay. Hey, next one is ordinance twenty one by seventeen, revised right-of-way activity program.
Okay, so we passed this ordinance last last time and I'll take the hit for this. The the version that was put in front of you was was not the final version. So there was a sentence left in there that would have changed the whole spirit of it. Move that sentence again. And now you have the correct version in front of you.
We just will know that really changed.
Oh, it's technical.
Scott come to me. Two or three days after we passed this. Any questions?
I'd like to do two readings.
Sure. Okay, I need a motion for ordinance twenty one by seventeen revised right of way.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Will.
Marissa Gage.
Hi.
Steve Denny. Robert Jones. Shane Davis.
Hi.
Jeff Baer.
Hi.
First reading on ordinance twenty one seventeen is approved.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and have a second read.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to suspend the rules for a second reading. Will.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Marissa Gage.
Hi.
Jeff Baer.
Hi.
Okay. Now I need a motion to have the second reading on ordinance twenty one by seventeen revised. Right-of-way activity program. So those. I'll second. Go ahead, Willie.
Marissa Gage.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Jeff Baer.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty one by seventeen, second reading is approved. Last thing on new business is resolution twenty one by oh six, virtual meeting attendance resolution. Jeff. Kind of explain it real quick. It's not stated.
It's a state, it's a copy and paste from a state statute. It allows. This body, town bodies to continue to meet virtually even the after the expiration of the health emergency. By the governor, which is through the end of this month at least, or the town council president. But if there's an emergency in place, we can always meet virtually. Well, there's no emergency. Let's say that someone's on. Call from at work or or is on vacation, can't think of anything better to do and wants to attend the meeting. You can get on a audio visual like Zoom and still participate. With very, there's a lot of limitations. You can't vote on budgets that way. There's things like that. It's not gonna be as a free for all like we've had since last March, but. This is one way. This is very similar to where redevelopment commissions have been doing it since about twenty twelve. It just is one more thing that you don't count for a quorum purposes. You still have to have a quorum physically present, but we can have three of you here. Two of you appear virtually and have five person votes. No more, you can't do more than two in a row and a lot of hoops. It can't be abused, but.
And that's that's okay. That's just, yeah, there's nothing wrong with it. Questions or comments about resolution twenty one by oh six, virtual meetings? Okay, can I have a motion to approve resolution twenty one by oh six?
So move.
Second.
Thanks for slowing down. Yeah, I have a motion and second. Will.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Marissa Gage.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Jeff Baer.
Hi.
Resolution twenty one by oh six approved. Don't really have any old business public comments or input just now.
Hello, my name is Susan Akers. I've been resident here for twenty five years. Before that, my parents had built in Woodbridge back in the late sixties. Oftentimes I hear people say, why do why don't we have a recycling area? So I feel that you gotta make it easy, gotta make it worthwhile. It's only plastics and aluminum that make you money. So I had the idea we should have a recycling drop off place near the dog park or somewhere. It would be easy to. Have people put those only two items in. And the director of the recycling center in Madison County by Mounds Road said she thought it would be a good idea. She would. Think about working with Pendleton if it was approved by the Madison County commissioners for this area. I believe it was Kelly Gaskell and. Darlene Lykins, that I would contact to further this idea or to at least get a conversation going on that. And I wanted to get feedback or at least ask you all to think about the procedure or who I would need to speak with. Or perhaps get our park department involved with the proper people from the Madison County Commission. To how a recycling bin, they would actually be in charge of coming to get the items. Again, the only things that make money are plastics and aluminums. So thank you. And I'm not sure. Questions?
Yes, can you give, you don't have to give it in the public, but leave your phone number so we can contact you.
Yes.
Yeah, leave it with me. Yeah, actually not the park department if you want. It may end up being in the park. Yeah, there may be. There may be another location.
See what we can do. Scott, Scott will follow that up. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? Meeting adjourned.